Superintendent for curriculum is with us tonight on Zoom. Oh, she hasn't signed in yet. She'll be here shortly. Um, we do have a couple of presentations tonight, but to get us started, if everyone could please stand for the pledge of allegiance. And remain standing for a brief moment of silence.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, equal to his law with liberty and justice for all.
Recently, we lost a community member, um, Miss Mrs. Elaine Avery. Um, she was a secretary in the district for many, many years. Um, she has many friends and families in the community as well as employees of the district. If we could all please have a moment of silence for Mrs. Avery. Thank you so much. Please sign two electronic devices as needed. If you're here for a class assignment, when the meeting is, is there anybody here for a class assignment? Is it still snowing outside? I'm gonna take solace on you cats. When it hits eight o'clock, raise your hands. And you can bring your paperwork up and we'll sign it for you. I just want you guys to get home safe, right? Uh, moving forward, uh, motions move the agenda to the table made by Mr. Groden, seconded by. Ms. Galligan, any discussion? All in favor? So ordered. Any additions, deletions, corrections to the agenda?
Yes, President Crumley, uh, I would ask the board to consider amending consent agenda item I six. To include only uh, these names with their respective positions and rates of pay. Michelle Ryan, Lisette Delgado, Zoe Zuckerman, Emily Maxwell. Justin Rodriguez, Diva Nieto, and Timothy Galloward.
Thank you very much, uh, Dr. Evans. Uh, motion to adopt an agenda as corrected by. This uh. Ms. Greco, any discussion? All in favor? So ordered. Approval of draft minutes, January twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-five. Motion by Ms. Greco, seconded by about some of the side. Any discussion? All in favor? So ordered. Um, we do not have a student board member update this evening due to the uh. Weather outside, which will move us right on to presentations. Uh, we did not have a meeting at the beginning of this month where we would have had a part of. Uh, one of these presentations, but it is budget season, so we are uh. Kind of at the mercy of our budget schedule, so we will be having two presentations this evening, so I'll pass this over to Ms. Bailey.
It's not coming on, so I'm gonna talk loud.
You got an echo.
I have an echo. So like President Crumley said, this is the preliminary budget forecast, the rollover budget and some assumptions we'll be making. As we move forward in the budget season. Next slide. So some of the considerations that we make for a rollover budget is our health insurance premiums. Our night shift rates for twenty twenty-five actually have not increased all that much. Family plan is less than um, it's two hundredth of a percent, so uh, it's really. A zero increase. Retirement contributions as well, TRS rates are not projected to increase at all for um, twenty-five, twenty-six. We have two collective bargaining agreements that will expire June thirtieth of twenty-five, so we make some assumptions. To um, increase salaries for those employees. We have stepped in the percentage increases for all the other units. And our first draft rollover budget, which is strictly everyone that's currently employed rolled forward. Salary and benefits only. It does reflect breakage from retirees and replacing all of those retirees. We estimate an increase of one point seven six percent or a hundred and two million forty thousand dollars. Next slide. So once we, I do the rollover budget, then I determine whether or not we can generate enough revenue to support that budget. Um, the governor's proposal came out the end of January. As you remember, twenty-four, twenty-five, we had a decrease of about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Twenty-five, twenty-six foundation aid is an increase of about seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Total aid increase of about three hundred and five, some of the expense-based aids showed a reduction. Um, looking into that, I have. Some corrections. That um, BOSI's is going to try to make with their projections, so I'm hoping that our number is closer to seven hundred and eighty total. I do the tax cap calculation. The tax-based growth factor is a decrease from the previous year. And the allowable levy growth factor is one point or two percent, same as the previous year. It's an estimate, tax cap isn't due until March first. I don't have the final pilot numbers yet. We get most of our pilot payments. In the month of February. But depending on our debt service and the pilots and how that formula of what. Flushes out, the levy may be more than the two percent cap, so we may be able to exceed the two percent. And then we consider uh, fund balance and where we are in fund balance, and if we need to appropriate any. To offset any tax levy increase and close the expense and revenue gap. I know this one's kind of hard to see. The top part shows the um, on the left, the rollover budget for the hundred and two million forty thousand for the one point seven six percent. And the right-hand side is our potential revenue. And then just based on those estimates, I'm showing a shortfall of about two hundred and two thousand dollars, which is really. Um, almost break even in a rollover situation. Last year, we've had a, a gap of about one point one million. In the rollover, so this. Projection and and rollover actually looks pretty good for us for twenty-five, twenty-six. But there are some things that are not included in the rollover budget that I go about now. Um, it doesn't include any building or department requests for the upcoming year, and if any of those increase, obviously, I don't have that information yet. The uh, twenty-four, twenty-five special aid budget. Um, we have a shortfall there of one point six million in this year's budget, so we'll have to make that up for next year. And uh. That was um, we had a lot of kids that we couldn't find placements for. We were doing a lot of. Home tutoring in previous years, and so we finally found placements, and so. The expense went up significantly. So then, you know, I always look to see how do we um, reduce any shortfall. When we look at the building and department budgets, we right-size programs. We apply fund balance. Um, one of the questions for the board is to decide if we want to. Put up a capital reserve for the voters on the twenty-five, twenty-six year to create a new one. As you remember, we used all of our capital reserves. For the new project. Um, we could use fund balance to offset taxes and fill the budget gap. And then I'm estimating if we do all of those things, we could still have a fund balance of between six and six and a half percent. At the end of the year. Which is right where we want to be. We could also lobby for an increase in state aid, but um. That's probably not an option this year. The governor did give us an increase, but you know. Don't be happy with two percenters for. And uh. The board would need to determine what the tax levy increase would be if you wanted to go to two point five or above if possible. And the last slide is our front balance projection. And this is just budget to budget assumes that we spend all of that money. And then the bottom line is the percentage of expenditures, and as you can see right now, I'm projecting if state aid stays at two percent increase. Each year. And we spend everything, we'll have pretty um, healthy fund balance for the next far five years, so. Are there any questions on the rollover? Like I said, this is just a point in time, and it's just an estimate to get the whole process started.
We're talking about placements. In general, how much does it cost a district for one placement?
It depends on where it is. And it depends on what needs the student has, so it could go, it could vary anywhere from. I'm gonna say what, sixty thousand to over a hundred and twenty, a hundred and fifty thousand?
How many students do we have placed in these? Out of district placement?
Out of district? Wait a few. I mean, out of district, that includes BOSI's. So yeah, there's.
Many of some students where it's a day program, some students where it's a residential program. And all those programs are slightly different in the amount of service they provide students, so. You know, on the low end, it would be, let's say, students attending a day program itself in BOSI's.
Basic services.
Go, go there in the morning, come back in the afternoon. On the high end, uh, we probably have, we have students in residential facilities downstate.
Yeah, yeah, over, probably over two hundred thousand dollars. Yes, those are um. We apply for what they call public access cost, a high access cost aid, um, public and private. The state determines the amount that the district should fund, which should be equal, you know, for all students receiving an education, so they have a, a formula. This is, this is what you will fund, and then the excess of that is aiding. And it's, we do it through the uh, stack system, which is system to track and account for children. And that the PPS department does. They put in all the information on the program and the student, and then um, we get. Private and public access costing.
Ms. Bailey, is it fair to say that? Since students are now being uh, placed in these uh, out-of-district placements instead of home tutoring. That that could lead to more high-cost aid and future aid runs compared to. A home tutoring model. So there is kind of a silver lining in this amount of money that's going on for students.
Just to add on to that. If there's a student that say is in eleventh grade and they don't have many services anymore. Do they, does their cost, is their cost less than somebody that's in, say. Tenth grade that has more services, meaning like more co-taught classes or more small classes. In-house, like how does it work? Do they average the amount of students? And work like that, or do they do for a teacher? I'm just curious.
So yeah, so what you have to do is you have to take um. The cost for all the services, so if they're in a um. Self-contained classroom and there's eight children in there, you take the cost of. The teacher, the teacher's benefits, if there's a paraprofessional. And all of the salary and benefits for the employees, and then you add in the um. Cost of the related services, the speech and all of that by student, but for the. Teacher and the paraprofessionals, you divide that by the number of kids. In the class, even if. If it's an eight-one-one and you have six kids, you have to divide it by eight. Because you could have eight at any one time, so you can't get more if you don't have, you know, the classroom's eight-one. That's what you have to do.
All right, thank you.
One more quick question. Cause I'm, I don't see, where is the federal aid that we get? Is it on this one?
So it's just in um. I, I closed it. Do I have? Estimated level.
Page five. The, no, it's the federal, it's the fourth one. It says revenue, local, state, federal. Which in the grand scheme of things is a pittance. So for twenty twenty-five, it's two hundred and fifty K?
Yeah, that's the, that's the federal aid and the general fund. So the federal aid and the general fund is usually Medicaid reimbursements. For kids that um, have services that we can bill Medicaid for. The federal money that we get for other programs is accounted for in the special aid fund, not in the general.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Presentation number two.
Okay, so that was last floor meeting. Um, tonight, we have our first presentation of um, department budgets. We have our plant operations, transportation, technology and security on budget. And uh, I'm not sure who's up first.
You are, you're still going.
Oh, I'm still going.
Still page four, you got three pages.
I got three pages, okay, so the introduction. So the board uh, adopts the final budget in April. The budget's presented to the public at the budget hearing in May, the vote, public votes on the adopted budget. We provide additional details of the budget at subsequent meetings and also at our annual meeting. Our goal here is to be as transparent as possible. After the presentations, we'll open the floor to questions from the Board of Education. If we don't have your answer, we will provide it at the following meeting. Uh, one of our key focus always when we're creating our budget is our vision, mission and our goals. You know, it's kind of hard to read, but those are all on our website. And first up is plant operations, our director of facilities, Steve Lewis.
So much, much to speak, I didn't get any better over the years, so. Happy to say that it'll be my last presentation. Uh, so I'm, I'm assuming everybody has a copy, but I can't see it over there. So, you know, the traction, we kind of, we kept the numbers the same, you're well, I feel like the oil we're gonna have a little left over this year, I think. I just think the oil will stay where it is, and we're out a bit now.
We are out a bit now, yeah, they're, they're due back um, mid-March.
Right, so in propane, I think we'll stay where we're at, okay. Water we used has went up a little bit, so I just, in electricity, it looks like we're. Be where we are, this department's end numbers are pretty good. Uh, equipment replacement, we are, we have, we just ordered another uh, violence program, but really good custodial equipment. Over the years, we purchased it, and we maintained it, so. That's why I took that down, ten grand. Equipment replacement maintenance. Now my. We are due for another truck this year, and we spend, we buy the trucks that we've been buying, it's about ninety-nine. I allocated a hundred and ninety because I'd like to get a uh, Mavis truck, utility body. A little heavier duty truck with a buck with one. Which are parking lot lights, are banners. Fresh wash off buildings, fix the cylinder around the buildings, you know, fix windows. Actually wash windows and utilize, there's probably a million things that we don't, that I have to think about right now that we could use for, but that's why that number is there. And there's five hundred thousand. To replace the boilers. Boilers have done, I have one boiler running right now. The other boiler is a circulator pump, it's bad, we got a pit rebuilt. But it's leaking between the sections. We've replaced. At least four sections, so when you. It, it should, they're just beyond your care. You can go on and on and on, and you're gonna end up, so you put a bad section on a good section. So now that's, now it's leaking between the other two sections. The, the guns are shot. They're just shot. It's, they're just. You know, we can Band-Aid them, and Band-Aid them, and we're just throwing them away, and you realize that's an anomaly, but I can't, I can't guarantee. I can't guarantee they're gonna beat that building to what we have in rain this year. That's where, so that's why that's. I made some inquiries about numbers. I looked at what we did at high school for boiler replacement and. We're not gonna lie, I can reach this basic, that's a rough guess, I didn't know. So that's where that is, uh. Purchase service really where it's at, and, and, yeah, we did blacktop behind the middle school, I think everybody. Went and saw that, that's pretty good. I want to seal the parking lots spring again. And possibly use more blacktop needs, depending on the number, so that's where that's at. Boiler custodial, we dropped that down. We're, you know, we're using the in-house trucks versus a guy driving our trucks. Trying to instill that as well. Uh, conference amazing, we dropped that down, just having trouble getting the guys to go. Uh, custodial supplies, we dropped that down, some I think that we'll be okay with that. Supplies maintenance, we dropped that down. You know, there, there's a lot of new equipment. So that's. Drop that down, some. Supply grounds, you know, fields are done. Ball fields are excellent. I think we'll be okay there. And vehicles, we got three good vehicles, we dropped that down, so that's kind of where it is.
Any questions for Mr. Lewis? Thank you very much.
So one of the things, if the boiler works down right now, Doug.
And no other option, I mean, I think, well, I mean, we try, obviously, to get it going and do our best to get it going. But it's. It's just, it's just that that, I mean, it's just, it's just, it's not. And it's, that's kind of where it is.
Is that original with the Doug?
What's that?
Is that original with the Doug School?
I believe so, but I'm not a hundred percent sure. And then getting it apart from is an issue too.
I just want to let you know that I think like the Chase Elementary School looks really bad in this.
I'm sorry?
Chase Elementary School. There's the mural, there's the painting, and then it's like it needed a. Pressure washing, and I can tell that it looks like it's been pressure washed. It looks so much better. And so I really appreciate that.
That's nice, thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Lewis. Thank you, Mr. Lewis.
And next up, we have our presentation department and our director of transportation, Robyn Spar.
Evening, can't believe this already been here, I'm standing up here. For the twenty, I'm on the safety budget. I increased the school bus purchase to eight hundred thousand, six hundred thousand. I have two grants that we put in the EPA. And it's not um, full payment, it's like now, it can range from three hundred thousand to four hundred fifty thousand. We rewarded the grant, so two hundred thousand there, so we can see if we can get the buses. If we're awarded, uh, we do not have to take the buses if we're awarded. We don't want to take both buses, we can take one bus. But I figured, you know, it was out there, I should grab it. Uh, purchase services, we went down on that. Uh, drive meetings, same. That's for the mechanics and ropes stuff with the bus group. Contract uh, transportation, we kept the same. Physicals are the same. Advertising, I have a budget for a thousand dollars. We haven't been using that, so we took that out. Uh, conferences. Drop that down. Um, insurance premium price. Went up a little bit, so. General supplies. Um, brought that down, you know, kind of being in that beautiful new place, you know, we had to get. Supplies, so kind of that one, spawned down. Trophies and awards. I haven't used that, so we deleted that also. Um, they don't want a trophy, do you like? Uh, bus parts bid, we kept that the same. Uh, gasoline, we kept that the same, diesel, the same. Engine oil was same, uh, lubricants for the. Buses, tire, I kept that the same. Uh, then uh, purchase services for the bus garage, so just put that, brought that down. Machine repair, we kept that the same. The fuel, oil, water, electricity, telephones. Uh, I'm really not part of that, that goes through ops, they didn't work on that, but. It all seems to be the same as last year. And uh, general supply, we kept the same in tools. What are their tools we need? And basically. Uh, the difference from last year is. Setting two hundred thousand for the buses, but also kind of cutting the budget down into a hundred seventy-nine thousand, five hundred twenty. For the ship.
This might be more of a question for Lisa or Steve, who buys the propane in that gargantuan submarine, the tank that's out front?
So the propane comes out of Steve's budget?
That comes out of Steve's.
Yeah, the uh, fuel, oil, water heat for the bus garage itself, we code to. Transportation because we can get transportation aid on it. That's why I put it there.
Mr. Grob.
Speaking of aid, what is the difference in retail price, MSRP of a. Electric bus versus a really cool propane bus?
Uh, propane, uh, wouldn't pull it, wouldn't work, uh, to, they, you have to have no efficient.
Okay, forget that, diesel.
So buy diesel bus right now, diesel for seventy-two passenger, you're looking at a hundred and seventy-eight thousand. If it was electric?
Nope, no, thank you. No, no, not interested. I like the first one. Thank you. One seventy-eight diesel out the door. One seventy-eight for a diesel out the door. Seventy-two C V, awesome.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. Uh, since our last meeting, I was informed about uh, uh, employee that's a bus driver that's been there over twenty-five years. Do you have many bus drivers that have been there for a long time, twenty-five years plus? I'm just curious to know as far as. Acknowledging people with certain amount of service that have been there for a long time.
Yeah, we have a couple of drivers that think about twenty-five years, we, we do know one who's over thirty. And um. It is, it's still slowly turned over now that. Ten fifteen. Driver, uh, year driver, are starting to be at the top. But uh, no, but we do have quite a lot that's been here for five to five.
It's pretty amazing, I think. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Clark.
Now, Director of Technology, this is Kimberly Ford.
So in the twenty twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-three school year, I already planned a budget um, quite a bit in order to read. The district, um, upgrade the smart boards in all the classrooms, the vending TVs. So over the past few years, we were able to complete that product. I'm able to take that money and we have a meeting.
Yeah. Any questions? Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Um, our director of security is not able to be here this evening, so I'll briefly explain the security budget. We uh, increased the security budget for um. An additional metal detector, wands and crowd control devices. We, you'll see a uh, increase in purchase services and a decrease in supplies. I worked with Mr. Coleman, we went through. Um, items that were included in the budgets previously in those items, in those lines, and reallocated to where they actually should be. So we had some things in supplies that should have been in purchase services, so there's no actual. Change, so to speak, it's just reallocation. Between those two codes. The main increase is the equipment.
Question? Moving on.
So I just like to provide some enrollment data early on in the budget process, so you can see where we've been for the last. Uh, eleven years, and our enrollment continues to decrease, unfortunately. The next slide is our historical budget information, just so you have it for reference, you can see where we've been, where the increases were, where we didn't raise taxes. Where we were last year. And then just some general budget calendar information. April twenty-first, twenty twenty-five is the deadline for submission for further initiated propositions to be placed on the ballot. And the deadline for submission of petitions for board candidates. April twenty-fifth is the final legal date for budget adoption by the Board of Education. May first, our three-part budget document will be available on request in various locations. May eighth is our budget hearing. And May twentieth is the annual meeting and budget vote. Upcoming budget presentations, our next one on March sixth will be our building budgets, all at. Three elementaries, SJS and athletics. Um. March twentieth is curriculum and staff development, people, personnel, BOSI's. Staffing and district-wide benefits and expenditures. And we plan to adopt the budget on April twenty-second.
Any questions, or Ms. Bailey, or any of our presenters from this evening?
I have a question. I know in the graduation committee, we were talking about, um, actually having a line in the budget for graduations. Has that been discussed? Yeah.
We just, we haven't really met with, um, the high school principal yet, so when we do that, we'll, we'll talk about those things, but, um, we didn't. I mean, I can always create a, a line if she wants one, it's, or, you know.
It'd be really nice after all these years, there's ground and fundraised and do everything to have like, it's like the most, I think I've said this before. It's the most important thing we do for our students. And it should be something that we at least allocate something towards.
Yeah, well, I mean, the, the money is in the budget. It's just usually in supplies in the high schools, just not broken out, so. That would be up to her.
Mr. Groban?
What do we have to do to get a line item, um, or is it a line item if we are looking to? Take advantage and capitalize on our state champion, ski champion, and then have a feeder system, just like we have youth soccer and youth football. You, um, is there any way that we can get bus that is designated to go over there and help kids after school get to this revitalized? Mountain that we have now?
A ski club?
Yeah.
Like a ski club?
Uh, yeah, like when I was younger, we used to have a program where after school, you know, we get to go down and we used to ski and.
I think we were, I, I may, I'd have to do a little more digging, but I think we were talking to an outside agency that was looking to. Possibly create, you know, have a donation towards that. Um, but we could conceivably look at a ski club, um, but.
Southern one eighty couldn't be like the health of the kids and getting out and getting, being outside, maybe they're not just on a console.
Well, I, I don't know that we've looked at, I don't think we spoke with Southern eighty, but I think, uh, we have been approached by the Town of Thompson. Don't hold me to that, but I think it was a government agency that wanted to explore that possibility. Uh, keep in mind that the costs of skis and lifts and everything else, as skiers know, is. Can be quite costly compared to other extracurricular activities and athletics.
But they do it at a discount for the schools and stuff. So when I did it for the Homestead and even the Town of Thompson, it's like ten bucks for a lift ticket, ten bucks for rentals.
Sure, but we don't, like right now, we don't pay for any feeder programs for soccer or football or lifting, right? So.
I'm talking about a bus, because if they don't have transportation, then we have big yellow things.
Yeah, but we. That would be our club, right? We don't, we don't sublease our buses to, to private organizations.
Okay.
Um. If it's a youth activity, you know, if it's a, a local youth club or activity, then, you know, then we're opening that up to other potential youth sports and activities. If it's a school-based extracurricular club, that's a possibility, but there would be a budgetary impact to it. We would have to provide an advisor, you know, some type of staff supervision to it. So it'd be like, it'd be creating another club or activity.
Yes.
Which would then be a line, so it's not stealing from.
Well, it'd be stealing from somewhere or you're adding to.
Jasper's line.
It, it probably would be under athletics or an extracurricular code for, let's say, the high school.
Yeah, high school.
Right? Uh, it'd be co-curricular under the high school, you'd be adding transportation, adding whatever the lift cost would be, adding staff supervision.
Or add the, uh, Lyles program.
Yeah, but you don't, you, you could conceivably do it through a grant too. Um, it's just sustainability sometimes isn't always there with a grant, right? But that's a, that is a possibility as well. But you have to have.
There's a bunch of tributaries that could add up to this being a stream of kids going to the mountain.
There, it has to be financially supported by the district in some way, whether that's through. Possibly the violence prevention grant or the general.
What if there are clubs in the elementary schools? And they are like, are boosters for their students to go?
Well, booster club would be similar to a, a community, like athletic program, whether that's ASO or, or Mathco or what happens, right? If it's a booster club.
Okay.
If it's our buses, then it's really our kids and our club, whether that's at the elementary or the high school or what happened, right?
Hmm.
Um, so if it's ours, we're adding to the budget or possibly tapping into existing grants. Um, but if it's a community activity, it's a community activity. And we wouldn't bust that. We might send out.
I got that, I got that, I got that. So if we, if we start a club and we have an advisor. Then we can go that way.
Yeah, that would be the way that we would go.
Awesome.
We need to invest in our youth if we want to have strong athletes in our own.
Uh.
That's true, and, and we do that, right? We have modified, we have modified skiing, but modified students in middle school can go out for the ski team and have. Uh, we do have a very successful skiing program.
I think the trick is finding that one person in the school that wants to create that baby, take care of the baby, take the baby to the ski hill every week. The way Mr. Mack used to do when we were in school.
Mm-hmm.
But we need to find that person who wants to create the baby, carry the baby, watch the baby and do, take care of it.
Doesn't have to be an individual from the school itself. So like when we had the track team, it was created via an outside entity. Is there somehow to make that connection with skiing?
It's in the contract.
Possibly.
Right now, it's in the contract that if a teacher does not want to carry that child, it's that, it's then open up to the public.
Correct.
And it would be a school sanctioned event.
Yeah, but you, you'd, you'd have to kind of create the whole club, right? You'd have to create the activity, have staff supervision, or if it were some outside agency that wanted to take it on, we would be happy to. To meet with them and discuss it. Um, but in essence, I mean, I, I think exceptionally, we should think about it as adding an extracurricular program.
Yeah, because even with the. Track team, we didn't provide transportation.
So we don't, yeah, we provide transportation for track.
I happened to, there's a serendipitous event meeting, Judge Brown, Judge Miller and Mr. Taylor all in the diner and then spitballing conversation of like.
Mm-hmm.
How can we do this? I said, well, we got a stadium coming, so watch what else we can do.
So I'm keeping an eye on, so the, the hill has to be open for, for that too.
Yep.
Right? I mean, that's always variable with our weather.
I'm aware that Liberty has a club that started last year. And they doubled their kids this year. I think it's around forty-something. And my niece is on it and she's in seventh grade. So, um.
Do they go to holiday?
They go to holiday, and they also go to Bel Air.
Yep.
Yeah, I understand. I could be wrong about that, but I believe that they do go some other places on occasion, but, um, it's on Fridays. It's up until like nine o'clock at night or whatever it is when they close, and it's just really great. They get home late. That's the thing too. You gotta think about that for your parents or families. Picking their kid up, and still it, to have the opportunity, I think is awesome. It's really like a.
Yeah.
Goal line, like a really awesome opportunity.
Yeah, especially if they're going, if they're out from the end of school.
So what I'm here.
Then the parents pick up later.
Creating for the parents possibly to, to help facilitate skiing in our youth.
Heck, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And Mr. President, it is well beyond eight o'clock for our gentleman.
Raise their hand?
Yeah, they're writing potentially everything that's going on here.
Look to do, things to take in. Yo, fellas, you wanna go home?
This is where you nod, nod. We're gonna give you a pass out. Say yes or no? Yeah.
You got enough, right? Kind of budgetary stuff. Ski club.
Uh, while they're still here and we're kind of wrapping things up, I do want to recognize, um. The Transportation Department and the Plan Operations Department for some pretty heavy lifting, uh, Tuesday morning after some pretty bad weather this weekend and, uh, thank you.
Thank you.
Wheels on the bus go around and.
Too soon. Is that it for budget? For any other questions on budget? Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Thank you, Ms. Sparr. Thank you, Ms. Gordon.
Thanks, gentlemen. Okay, moving on from our presentations. We have our consent agenda. This is Greco.
I'd like to motion that we approve consent agenda items, items F-one to M-one.
Do I have a second on that by Mr. Groban?
Yep, yep.
Any discussion? All in favor? So ordered. Thank you very much, Mrs. Greco. Moving on from there. We have information reports and discussions, uh, board roundtable. I'm gonna start with Mrs. Stalter.
Right. Uh, okay, I attended the graduation committee meeting on February third. I attended the high school Alpine ski team event at Bel Air on the twentieth of January, or twenty eighth, um, and then a hunter on the eleventh. Uh, did a modified indoor track meeting yesterday at Sullivan County and did varsity indoor track at West Point on the eighth and Salt County, thousand and ten. And I also attended the Liberty Jazz Festival where our high school and middle school bands performed at the beginning of February. And it was really excellent. And it's one of my favorite events of the year, so just a really well, well done to everybody in the music department that participated.
Um, the next graduation committee meeting, can you make sure that you mention to them that we're going to need nine tassels for board members?
Yes, that's the third of March.
I actually, uh, had a conversation with Score about that already and everybody, because there's some change of players.
Yeah.
Just FYI.
Um.
I said, we're very needy of those and we don't take no for an answer.
That's why I mentioned it. I don't want to, I'm not taking away from the kids, but.
No, just, you know.
Got you, yeah. Um, Mrs. Rader?
It's tough to follow up. I guess, pretty long. It's awesome. Uh, I attended, um, a PTO meeting yesterday at Chase Elementary, and I gotta say, those parents are really. Uh, they do a lot. They do a lot for the school. There, there's not a lot of people that are on, uh, the PTO. Uh, so they were talking about how to expand their numbers to get more involvement and so some ideas would come up, but, uh, they were. They talked about fundraising. They talked about there's a dance that's coming up, uh, tomorrow, I suppose, but there's a Valentine's dance. And they're, they do a lot for the kids. I'm not really sure if parents are aware of, and families about how much the PTA, uh, PTO does versus what they think the school is doing. So there was talk about, but there is a dance coming up, uh, gala. And it's to support the PTO activities, and that's at Cartwright, and this is the fourth year of it. And, uh, I go, I, I enjoy it, but, um, that, that's one of the big fundraisers. So they're doing a push on them to try to get, uh, more involvement with the community.
Thank you, Mrs. Rader. Uh, Mrs. LaRusa?
I attended several, um, wrestling matches, tournaments, sectionals. Think that's, um, everything with wrestling. I've been doing a lot of research and, um. Love me dear, dear colleagues that come out from the United States Department of Education Office for Civil Rights. And once I start getting, um, finding this stuff, so I'm looking to do this research, I will start forwarding to everyone as soon as I find it. And, uh, follow what's going on with the executive orders and how it plays out with New York State and. Just reading a lot to see how it's going to, uh. Play out in the school districts and just learn a lot. So that's what I've been up to. And there is going to be a pre-K dance. The same pack, um, St. Valentine's Day. It had to be changed because apparently there was a. Something happened. I guess it was a bust and, uh, something happened with Jen. It was in our. A pipe busted, so we weren't able to have it on the fourth or something like that, they said. So we will be having now the twenty-eighth, a little pre-K or two K dance. Yes, that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Groban?
Um, looking at, guys. I'm just excited that we have four of mine to shovels and graffeters stadium, nothing else.
It's galloping.
Um, I believe I attended, held a Sullivan County School Board Association meeting between the times we were here. Um, I think we discussed the budget and things along those lines for the coming, coming season and the date for our, um, award ceremony. Um, I also, uh, want to give a big shout out to Mrs. Boar. I know she's not here tonight, but they had a pep rally. Um, and the first time, my son is a senior, and it's not my first child coming through, but the feedback from the students for the first time. Was very over the top. They, it was on Facebook, they had Instagram, they, they filmed it. They said that she was just over the top with everything. It's the first time I saw Monticello spirit with our students. On a level that I haven't seen since I, I've been on the sport of education. So I just wanted to tell her that that was a phenomenal, phenomenal job, well done, and I hope she repeats it. Supposedly, she's supposed to be doing another one. But for, for bringing the climate and the culture of the school together, it was a, an amazing success.
Yeah, let's go.
And in addition to that, I spent many, uh, evenings and days off on Bel Air, Holiday Mountain. And I attended the sectionals, which was at Hunter Mountain for the high school, um, Alpine ski team. We have, uh. Amazing, amazing skiers, uh, this year. Uh, Lexi Hines, of course, uh, um, Sammy Ryan, we got, uh. Maddie Cavell going and also Reese, um.
Kelly.
Kelly. Four amazing skiers actually representing us at the states this year, and I, I really believe they're gonna do a phenomenal job. And I just want to congratulate them on the showing they put in, uh, these sectional championships. So you go.
No report.
Um, I also attended the Sullivan County School Board's, uh, meeting over at Sullivan County BOCs. Which was my first one of those. That was very interesting. Um, a few wrestling matches and tournaments as well. And then just the standard, uh, actually, no, I missed the last agenda setting. Mrs. Greco stood in for me. I was out of town for a little bit. But thank you, everybody, for doing, uh, all that you do. Moving on from that, we have two sets of reports. I'll go to the first set, which is from our principals, which is a holdover from our previous meeting. Any questions, comments, concerns regarding the principal reports?
I just want to say that I love what KLR is doing with the snail mail, teaching the children how to.
Dress in envelope?
Yeah, so important. So many people do not know how to do that, like where to put the stamp, where to put the return address label. That made me very happy to see that. Just wanted to give a shout out to KLR.
And then moving on from there, we have our director reports. Unlisted, um, one thing, um, Mr. Jasper's report, he had all of our state qualifiers listed out, which was very nice to see. Um, throughout all the events that we have state qualifiers, Alpine, Nordic, uh, indoor track and field. I'm sure I might be missing something, but, um. It's very nice to see our students excel. Any other questions, comments about the, uh, director reports? We do have a single correspondence outcome from public comment from our last meeting that is listed in your agenda. Uh, policy committee memo, I'll hand off to Dr. Evans in a second, but at our next meeting, March third.
Six.
Sixth. Sorry, um, previous to that meeting, we will be having a, uh, policy committee meeting. Dr. Evans?
Thank you, President Crumley. So, uh, the board does have in your, uh, board, uh, docs file, the agenda for that meeting. Uh, there will be an additional item under new business on, uh, extreme heat, uh, legislation. Uh, you may recall that earlier this winter, that was, or maybe late last fall, that was adopted into law. But they amended the law on Friday, uh, just this past Friday, uh, with some more flexibility. Uh, NISBA has put out a sample policy and, uh, our legal counsel just reviewed it today, and I, I think you may actually have a client memo on it in your executive contents. And yeah, that just came out today, so that'll be added to the memo as well. But front and center to that policy committee meeting will be revisions to the district's title line. A policy and then some other tweaks in the other policies, uh, that kind of spiral off those, uh, title line changes.
Moving on from there, we have capital project update. Um, I know further on in the agenda and the action items, we will, we have up for approval our construction manager contract for schoolhouse construction. Um, anything other than that to add, Dr. Evans?
Yes, we are, uh, recommending, uh, to award the bid of catalyst construction. The task four of the, the twenty eighteen capital project, the remaining work on that. Uh, is some site drainage work at Roughord Elementary School and also some drainage work and re-contouring, repaving, resurfacing. At Monticello High School that would kind of finish off that fifty-four million dollar project. And then one other thing, you heard Miss Fela, uh, mention it during her budget presentation, but, uh, the board, this is something that the board. Uh, well, the budget committee should certainly entertain, but the board at large as well, is a possible referendum on the creation of a new capital reserve fund. Uh, so you recall that we've expended all of our remaining capital reserves on the most recent project that was approved. Uh, so you recall that we've expended all of our remaining capital reserves on the most recent project that was approved by the voters. Uh, we believe that this might be the appropriate time to establish a new fund. Uh, the way that typically happens is. Uh, the board proposes to the community to establish a capital reserve fund to be used only for capital projects. Not to exceed X dollars. If the public approves that, then the board, after that approval, can then add to that fund up to that cap at your choosing. So in other words, the first step would be a referendum on whether to create the fund or not at a given level. And then if it's approved by the voters, then the board decides when and how frequently to fund it to fill up to that level if it decides. Okay, so that's something that.
And for the district to use those funds needs to be voter approved.
Correct, later on.
Later.
So that'll be coming up in the next few discussions as well.
Questions about capital project? Um, upcoming events are listed out in your agendas. Community events, there is a plethora of articles listed in your agendas. That have come out, um. So please uh read through that. There's a lot of good articles there. Questions and comments from the public? Do we have anything there? So I just have to read mine. I'm good. Okay, I'm good. I just gotta read my thing. I just have to read through uh something real quick. Board of Education recognized the value of public comment on educational issues and matters of public interest. In order to prevent unfair and orderly expression of public comment, following rules shall govern and will be administered by the presiding officer. Please note, the first public comment period of forty-five minutes maximum duration will be at the beginning of the meeting and a period of fifteen minutes maximum at the end of the meeting. Either period may be extended by a majority vote of the board. Neither public comment period is a time for public discussion. If necessary, the community member will be contacted for follow-up. If you wish to speak, place your name, email, and/or address and telephone number on the sign in list indicating the topic of your comments. Prior to making your comment, state your name to the record. Identify any group or organization you represent. Comments are limited to three minutes or less per speaker. Your speaker may not yield his or her time to another speaker in order to extend the time for comment. No speaker may comment on or identify any particular student or employee by name, position, or situation as her comments. All comments can be directed to the board president or designated. Handouts and/or petitions are given only to the board president for distribution to the board. The board will receive and consider all written comments. A memo will be placed on the agenda on the next meeting under information reports and discussions to keep the board informed of the outcomes. Will be titled upon us outcomes. Will be a public document.
Hi, my name is Diane, I'm a resident of the board members, I'm Dr. Evans. Um, um, my um. Granddaughter was sent to school, um, she, she spent mostly since the ninth grade. I had made paper complaints, nothing was much done, um. She resorted to a physical fight, um, when she was like the, for the aggressor, because she has so much built up. I had complained about it. I had done a lot of things to the principal for when she became the aggressor. I think she got, you know, suspended, but nobody, it better to do that. I don't condone what she did, it was wrong. But now after this happened, she's very upset. She feel nobody listens to her. She looks for help and she doesn't find anywhere. She's been a non-student all this year. She's a good student. Um, she came home today very upset. She wants to quit school. She said the eleventh grade, she's doing this. I'm really scared. I was very hurt today. I was crying. She felt like. Nobody's gonna, she's an I O D that she's not getting the help she need. I feel the school is not giving the help she need. Um, at this point, uh, and there's a lot not to them that I don't feel I should be scared here. I feel I want to give Dr. Evans the respect to discuss it with him first in private. So I would, at this point, I would like an appointment privately with Dr. Evans. And discuss them further if I go further with this issue. I think what I think outside help. But I think it's unfair that I'm doing between those school, but like I almost have, I wanna go to the board. For, but it's came to the point that is, you know. And this way coming now, what a while. And actually, like I said, she's an honest student. She gets good grades from ninth grade to eleventh grade, and I really don't want her to play. She's so close to graduating, she gets. And that's not the end. She's an age when she couldn't do that. And I don't want her to do that. Today she came, she wanted to go to home today. She didn't wanna go back to school and uh. Sometimes I have to, we were want to get a peace of mind because she said, I'm gonna do anything. And I wanted to talk today to the meeting to explain myself. She didn't even want to do that. So I think that's the last resort. I wanted to, to quit school. I wanna get it through.
Somebody from the district will follow up. Your contact information is on the assignment sheet.
Yeah.
Thank you very much for coming and speaking.
Please, I need to be in.
Someone from the district will follow up.
Thank you so much.
So much. Thank you.
Uh, now, virtual check LLC. It's a tight three minutes, so please give the due intent second people. Okay? On September seven, two thousand twenty-three, I address this board in compliance assistance regarding reservations of the high school in my group to play a simple basketball. We were faced with the inconvenience of sometimes waiting outside in cold for up to forty-five minutes waiting for access to the gym we had reserved. We not only received no help, but since then, it appears there has been a coordinated effort to marginalize my group within the school's facilities. We have been made to feel completely unwelcome with a clear indication of this coming on June seventh, two thousand twenty-four. When I received unmoored to test messages stating straightforward, you and your boys are no longer welcome at high school. Despite, despite my attempts to seek clarification through multiple calls and emails, their response was vague. That's just what has been decided. After some persistence, we were actually told we could make reservations after the summer, but that access to the high school and middle school was no longer permitted. When asked why, I was told that nobody is allowed to reserve these locations anymore. Understanding that this seemed unreasonable but fair, we were then forced to reserve this gym, a slightly more outdated and less desirable location. During this time, there have been multiple unfounded accusations where me and my boys were playing for incidents. Including, but not limited to, showing up on days not scheduled, staying past our scheduled time. Even more serious accusations of smoking weed in the locker room, causing issues in the parking lot, and refusing to leave the building when directed by a fireman to an fire truck. All included and proven not to be us. Following that, when the level of fires were considered, I found my group's reputation unfairly tarnished by three unknown recipients. Who had no context of the situation. While I later received an apology for that specific issue, it does not address the broader pattern of exclusion and discrimination in our face. And as it's saying though, we can't on ring and bell, the damage to our reputation is already been done. Recently, I noticed other groups, including those playing pickleball and volleyball, have been granted access to the high school facilities. As well as basketball, the most, I submitted a new request to conserve the high school gym, believing that overall fan had been with it. Our request was promptly denied. When I asked for clarification, I was told that still nobody is allowed to preserve these locations. However, clear evidence showed that other groups are actively using these facilities, prompting further questions onto why they should be treated differently. Now my group cannot help but notice that although I'm a white man of middle age, most of my groups are young, black minorities. And the other groups that are allowed to play are usually consisted of older Caucasian adults. And you know, the disparity raises concerns for my members. Apart from, um, it's possibly being discriminated, biased against, or just a straight up personal conduct of someone who shot on me. I have evidence in the form of text messages, emails, which highlight the treatment. Additionally, I spoke with individuals within the school district, but indicated that disparaging remarks have been made about me and my group behind those doors. I reached out.
Mr. Hutchins, Mr. Hutchins, Mr. Hutchins. You've reached your time.
Gotcha.
I let you go over that time. If you have a written statement that you would like to give me.
No, I'll say what I say.
Thank you very much for coming and speaking this evening. Our superintendent's updating information, Dr. Evans.
Thank you, President Crumley. So tonight. Teaching assistant in the district, Ms. Tasha Loving. Congratulations, Ms. Loving. So just to follow up on some of the uh, the budget discussions that were kicked off tonight and certainly lie ahead. Uh, in future board meetings, I, I did want to highlight with the board some of the uh things that I'm looking into relative to. What I think are, are some necessities within our budget for the upcoming year. Uh, first, it would be an additional school resource officer for the district. Um, and that individual would be. At the moment, the thinking is here to have a full-time uh police presence at St. John Street. Uh, we believe that the uh, you know, our kids are safe here, our staff are safe here. However, we have seen increasing. Uh, foot traffic in and around the building, uh, where we think uh an additional uh police presence would uh help. Uh, further secure the facility and harden the target, if you will, as we talk about with security circles. Uh, another significant uh piece of the budget that we're looking at is a realignment. Of general education paraprofessionals, so that would include teaching assistants and aides. Uh, to have a more equitable distribution across our schools in the district. So the idea would be something along the lines of, similar to what we did last year with AIS teachers at the elementary school. Uh, it would be looking at um. Taking right now the total number of, let's say, AIDS and TAs in our elementary schools. The non-special ed aides and TAs, so not your one-to-one aides, not your TAs that are in special ed classrooms, but kind of your general ed aides and TAs. Taking that current number now and how many students are serviced across the elementary schools. And then based on student needs, reapportioning them across the elementary schools for next year. So in other words, based on enrollment, based on student demographic needs, using a, a kind of a formula, we would say. Rutherford needs X number of teaching assistants and X number of aides for next year, based on their student needs. Cook Elementary School needs X number of teaching assistants and X number of aides, based on their needs, and similarly with Chase. So uh, we are working, you know, working with Ms. Phala and Ms. Carlin, and then soon with the principals. About how that formula can be done equitably, done in a way that nobody loses their jobs. We're, we're not gonna change that number of aides and TAs. Basically, you know, let's say hypothetically, we have seventy aides and TAs across those elementary schools now. Taking that same seventy, but making sure that their, their distribution is targeted to our, to meet our student needs. Um, but more to come on that. And then lastly. Uh, looking ahead to possibly the implementation of professional learning communities as a, as a model for our schools. Um, any costs associated that will most likely come through grants, so there's not gonna be a direct hit on general funds. Um, but certainly we would be committing professional development time to that, uh, and possibly looking at potential release. Early release days next year to help facilitate those discussions among our staff. A lot of that work are teachers, professionals, and administrators, looking at student assessment results. And looking at standards in our curriculum and, and how the three align. Um, that work uh has begun this year. We had a lot of good work around that at last Friday's conference day, where a lot of our teacher leaders took the lead. In the facilitation of that discussion, and I want to thank them. Uh, as well as our administrators in those discussions. I jumped around to a few of them on Friday. And they look very promising and on target with what we need to do here. So more to come on that. I'm just kind of giving you a high-level overview at the moment where we stand. Uh, the state education department published their high school graduation rates as of August twenty twenty-four. I've included that data in my report. Um, the short story is that we saw a slight increase in our four-year graduation rate. Uh, in August twenty-three, it was seventy-five percent. That includes out-of-district placements. So that's not just the students who go to Monticello High School, but also those that attend Bosse's other programs. That increased slightly to seventy-eight percent in August of twenty-four. Uh, there is an ad hoc committee that's looking at uh. Uh, the graduation rate task force, and I've, I've shared those uh recommendations with you, and our administrators are carrying that work forward. Uh, we've also, Ms. Carlin and her team have developed a, I'll say, a working draft of a new multi-tiered systems of support plan or an NPSS plan. I think the big highlight in here, among other things. But in essence, what we wanted to do is capture the current practices, document those. As well as establish hard cut points uh of student assessment results for those students that will need, let's say, tier-two math intervention. Tier-three math intervention, tier-two reading intervention, and so on. So that's embedded in that plan, so that way we can make sure that students who are demonstrating these results are getting the appropriate intervention services that they need. Um, also tonight, I'm proposing the adoption of the academic calendar for next year. Uh, it includes seven emergency closure days next year. Uh, this year, we've only used six, and our three-year running average is seven. And using, you know, what the state recommends you do or suggests you do, is do a three-year average. Our three-year average is seven. Um, we did make one small change to spring recess next year. That's to align it better with what the other Sullivan County school districts are doing. And last but not least, I do have some superintendent office hours coming up, one next week from four to six PM, another one in March, another one in April. And as was mentioned earlier, best of luck to our Alpine and Nordic skiers. There's nine of them total who will be at the state meets Monday and Tuesday of next week. So best of luck to them. Any questions or comments? Mr. Riley?
Uh, I have a comment about allocating the assistance or the aides.
Yes.
Distributing. Uh, I'm just, my first concern was normally, aren't the aides sometimes family members of the students? Such as a parent or, is that the draw to be an aide in a school or to be a parent of the kid that's at the school? When you go there, you drop the kid off and then you're there doing things with your kid. I'm just concerned about that situation where you're gonna have a parent. Or family member. And they're asked to now go work in a different school, when the point was they were, they were picking that school just to be. Amongst their kid and make a difference in their kid's school. That, that's just my concern, that I wonder if that will pose a problem and cause some. Aides that already have that situation, now they're gonna be told that they have to go to another school, and that's just how it is. I just don't know if that's, um. So I would, I would be cautious of that, right? When I think of what's, what would be planned.
Certainly. Well, and, and that is a motivation for many of our paraprofessionals, a motivation for many of. Our teachers and administrators as well, to be in and around the schools that their, their children attend. Um, I think what we've heard from some of our teachers and our administrators is that uh. The rese, the paraprofessional resources, and they all work hard at their jobs. But there are different needs across the elementary schools. And there may be greater needs of paraprofessionals at some schools that we don't have that need met yet. So the idea is creating like a weighted formula. So we would account for obviously total enrollment of the school. But uh economically disadvantaged students would be weighted. English language learners would be weighted, K-two students would be weighted, because we recognize that primary grade kids need additional supports. Um, and students with disabilities would be weighted as well. Similar to what state aid allocations are, right? If you look at the foundation aid formula, they account for all those when they decide to send money to school districts. So the idea is to make sure that our student needs are met. Um, and that doesn't necessarily mean that, um. You know, we're kind of disrupting the, the situation that you described, where, you know, this, this paraprofessional. Applied to this vacancy that was in this school because their kid goes to that school. There's, there's possible wa, possible ways of doing. Uh, reassignment without that being disrupted, but we haven't gotten to that stage yet because we're still working on. What that equity formula might look like.
Any other questions for Dr. Evans?
Or do they have shortages on the other schools? Is that the problem? Like, there might not be, I don't see shortages at Chase, what I'm there to say.
We heard from teachers and administrators that there are, there's not enough paraprofessional support in. Uh, in Rutherford in particular, um, that's been voiced to us uh by, by teachers and administrators.
So, um, is there not enough in the budget to pay for extra aides in that school and retain the aides that are in the other two schools?
You would be adding to the budget to do that. So that's a possibility, but you, you'd be again increasing the budget in order to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Victoria, did you have a question?
I did about the professional learning. Is this funded through grants? What type of grants? Federal state?
Federal uh and state. Uh, there'd be title, probably title-two grants. Uh, Ms. Carlin could speak to this better, but title-two grants. Title-one school improvement grants. Um, so again, your title grants. The federal government releases great big federal monies to state education agencies, and then the state. And then the state education department then disperses them based on your student needs, your accountability status, and a number of other things. So it's initially originating out of the federal government, but the state says. Here's this grant that your district is eligible for. How would you intend on using the money? We submit the budget to state ed, and then they, they tell us yes or no on the budget.
Okay, um, as far as substitutes, though, I know that in one of, um. The pre-K, they're short. On substitutes, is there a way to do what you're gonna do with the paraprofessionals, the same thing with substitutes?
Um. So we've had some discussions about this. So right now, the way the substitute system works is. We interview substitutes, you know, people who apply. Substitutes in. The A S O P system, that's the software we use for substitute assignments. Uh, they get to select the assignments they wanna take or not. So, um, try as we may, we, we could try to do that, but they can always say, I'm not gonna come in then. So it's not just at the pre-K. We've also heard that at Rutherford. Uh, and at the secondary levels as well, not so much, but Rutherford and the pre-K seem to be acute. But we are trying to. Spread our advertising, uh, we are gonna post those positions on all-offs, and we are looking at this type of system. Is there a better way that we can? Kind of say, no, you're, you're, we need you at the preschool today. That's where you're going. But we'll see.
Thank you very much, Dr. Evans.
One quick question. Are you serving the senior class? I mean, like, some of them, I'm staying at Sullivan. Are you, like, saying, hey, you could. Come be a substitute on your days off? Is that something?
Uh, I'm not directly, no, but, uh, they, well, they can't be a substitute yet on their days off. Oh, once they, um, we have, uh, done programs like T S T T. We have done career days. You saw me at career day. I did, I did it when I was at my table, I did. Um, but, uh, I think there's probably, you know, we could do greater outreach for education as a career in general, but I get that from a lot of different. Career, you know, career pathways too, you know, are you looking at this? When can we come in and talk to kids? And we, we do have those opportunities, but I, I think in general, it's just. Finding. Good work is difficult across many different industries right now. But we continue to try, and I'll work with Ms. Gordon, get used to see if there's ways we can better do that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Evans. Uh, moving on from there, we have our assistant superintendent for business update. This is Fred.
So this evening, um, I have the award for catalyst construction that Dr. Evans talked about. The schoolhouse construction manager agreement that Dr. Evans also talked about.
Sorry.
That's okay. Yeah, if you're a regular, uh, budget status, revenue status, claims auditor, school lunch profit and loss for the month of December. The student activity quarterly report. Um, there's also a contract with Tri Valley for preschool special education services. This is the agreement we ask, um, all districts that send a preschooler to ours. Um, program to sign, just so that if they fail to, um, do their stack and. You know, submit for payment, so that we get reimbursed from the county. We have a, a recourse, so that's just protecting us. And the final thing I have is, uh, excess of us.
How come the seventh and eighth grade class have so much money in their account?
How much I, I.
One has thirteen thousand. The other has eleven thousand. Then you go to the high school and the senior class has like, only like four grand.
They had leftover from COVID, and it kept, yes, way, and it kept stacking.
Six in, in the middle school right now?
Mm-hmm, yep.
Yeah, it looks like they did a big fundraiser, got a lot of money this year. Um, so I, I don't know what their fundraiser was that raised seventy-seven hundred dollars, but.
Spend the other money. All that money is fundraised, right? We don't, we don't, we don't apportion our.
I'm just saying, the senior class, like, I was like.
Yeah, I don't know who's the advisor, but now.
Well, they probably haven't taken out for their eighth grade trip yet.
Or, no, the eighth grade trip, yeah, that'll go in the spring, so.
Any other questions for, uh, Lisa? Thank you very much, Lisa. Uh, up on the screen, we do have Mrs. Carlin. Who is up next with an assistant superintendent for curriculum and instruction update, um. Ms. Carlin, we got you?
Yes, thank you, President Crumley. Good evening, everyone. Um, just to touch on Victoria, your question about PLC. Right now, all of the PLC work that we're doing is funded through. Title-one, title-two, title-four, title-five. And our school improvement funding, because it all directly relates to improving student learning and their ability to. Um, to score proficiently on our assessments, so it fits in nicely. Um, and the only thing I have on the agenda for tonight is a business contract that I'm asking for your approval for. Otherwise, that is all I have, and I hope everyone has a good night.
Are we good on assistant superintendent? Thank you very much, Mrs. Carlin.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Uh, moving on from there, we have our action items. So, Mrs. Cracker.
I'd like to motion that we take action items T-one to T-thirteen as a group.
Do I have a second on that by Mr. Groden? Any discussion? All in favor? So, in the order.
I'd like to motion that we approve the action items T-one through T-thirteen.
Do I have a second on that by Ms. Galloway? Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Uh, that brings us to closing of meeting, correspondence. Do we have any other questions or comments from the public?
I have a question. I read something about the school buses, electric school buses, that is getting pushed back or whatever. Did you guys read that?
It's, there's some heavy lobbying efforts right now in Albany around extending that out. So for multiple. Uh, organizations, uh, the transportation directors, NISBA is advocating for it. NISCUS, the superintendent's organization is advocating for a kind of more gradual implementation. It's, it's being lobbied heavily, but I have not seen anything in the. Budget proposals yet that indicates that.
Motion to adjourn. Mr. Groden, seconded by Ms. Thalter. Any discussion? All in favor?